This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 24th, 2021 meeting of the Monterey Select Board here in Town Hall. I am Stephen Weiss, the Chair. Justin Maycock, President. And it seems that Mr. Weingold is not present. I don't think it's going to be a long session, but we'll just jump right in. Please, if anybody cannot hear me clearly, because I know we've had some audio difficulties, please let us know. Because it's important. The first, the first item on the agenda is refers to an email that was received by Mr. Maycock and myself. Hello, here. An email that was received from Mr. Maycock and myself on November 17th at 5:14 PM, which was one minute prior to us beginning a series of executive sessions and public sessions. I think as it pertains to the, to the public, it's important to, to read, to read this email into the minutes, and so therefore I'm going to do so. This email again is from John Weingold, Monterey Select Board, to Justin and myself. And here on, here is the quote. Quote. "I am hereby notifying the Monterey SB that I am boycotting," parentheses, "my civil disobedience," end parentheses, "any future SB meetings in which Steve Weiss is Chair. My perspectives are many." Comma. "His personal injection into the, quote, 'police investigation,' end quote, his continued motions of prevarications to fellow SB members and the public." Comma. "His failure to protect the integrity of the functioning of the SB as a group," comma, "is conducting SB business involving the TA's HR issues by himself," comma, "behind the scenes," comma, "without any SB authority," comma, "is dominating discussions," comma, "allowing improper posts of SB meetings and agenda items to the public," comma, "violating the OML twice in the past and likely numerous times currently," comma, "and abuse of the position as the Chairman of the SB by continued bullying and badgering of Justin on issues." Period. Lastly, I will not be participating in any meetings that allow open mics, parentheses, which was my idea borrowed from GB, end parentheses, while the SB is deliberating. Period. My perspective is that open mic has become a free-for-all opportunity for personal attacks of SB members, comma, opportunities to bulldoze members to change their votes, comma, bullying of SB members on issues, comma, ad hominem attacks of members, comma, allowing thunderheads who don't know any facts on the issue to speak, comma, and allowing mob rule and control of the SB meetings by minority of the town residents. Period. From my perspective, the Chair and the TA and her followers are controlling the SB meetings, comma, what topics are thoughtfully discussed, comma, and the executive functioning of SB and its deliberations have been destroyed. Period. We are not functioning as a board. Period. And that's the end of the email that I've received. So let me just take just a few statements and then I'll open it up to the board members or. So when I was in grade school, we were taught all about, we, we, we took civics classes. I don't know if they would teach them anymore in, in school. And the idea of, of, of public service and, and what a public servant is, is, I think that's, that's explained on the first day. Basically, the Select Board members here and other elected positions here in Monterey and around the country, we're here to serve the public, not the other way around. We serve at the, we, we, we're put in place because the people of this town would like us to make things run, to make things run better. We are given a specific amount of time to do that, but it is a great responsibility. There are other, there are other positions in Monterey that are also elected. Assessors, the Board of Health, moderator, tax collector, tree warden, constable, finance committee, Board of Appeals, School Committee, Planning Board, ZBA, parks, library trustees. All these people are elected by the public to serve the public. They don't get to say, you know what, I don't like the people that I'm serving with, so I boycott my job. I'm not going to do my job. We don't get to say that. As a matter of fact, it's quite the opposite. We not only, this is not a nine-to-five job, at least for me. I consider this a 24-hour, seven-day week, 365-day-a-year job. I don't drive through town without looking at the roads, what's going on in the firehouse, who's parked in Town Hall. I take this down very seriously. And any, I believe, I believe all the public servants or the majority of the public servants in this town take their jobs seriously. I will, I will call a specific tension since we, you know, if you'd like an example, is when the transfer station needed help. Justin and his father jumped right in there to help. There's no requirement for him to do that. He doesn't have to do that. But he's a public servant and he jumped in there to help the people of Monterey. I remember when there was nobody to sell dumb stickers over the weekend, this many, many, many years ago. I went in and sold dumb stickers. We do whatever we can whenever, and we do it for the publics. We do it for, for, to serve the public. And that's our job. I guess. So anyway, so this statement here is completely the opposite. This is, I don't like somebody or I don't like what they're doing, so I'm not going to do my job. You don't get to do that as a public servant. And you don't get to do it, by the way, in a private email that gives your opinions. That, that is a violation of the Open Meeting Law. Actually, this is a good example, if you want to know a textbook violation of the Open Meeting Law. So the other, the other things, I really don't care. We get called off the whole sorts of names and things like that, and that's, and that's perfectly fine. So and all these, all these things that are written about me, I couldn't care less. But the idea that anybody sitting on any public board would just say, you know what, I boycott my job, is fundamentally doesn't understand, again, what public service is all about. So, and that's something, by the way, that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the Collins Center. The Collins Center doesn't mention any of this because the Collins Center just assumes, we're talking about the Collins Center report, that people have taken civics in grade school and understand the whole nature of public service. So I will continue to serve the public in any capacity that I can, certainly throughout my elected term. I, I have faith that Mr. Maycock will do the same. And and I, and I, I challenge, I challenge Mr. Weingold to show his stamina and resolve by boycotting the meetings until I step down in May. Because I don't think he's going to. I think he's going to come back eventually. He may be listening right now. Do you have to comment, Justin?
No, I haven't.
Anybody in the public want to say anything? Okay. So this is being read into the minutes. Word for word. Let's move on. Ten, old business, I'm sure, approve the minutes of 10:26 and 11:17. Have you had a chance to read, read the minutes?
10:26, yes. 11:17, no.
Okay.
So I'm, I think 10:26 is all good by me. So I would motion to approve the 10:26.
I, I second, I second that motion. And I go, yes.
Yes.
And I, Justin, I agree, I agree with you that, I haven't had a chance to really go through the 11:17, and so, so I move that we table that until the, until the next session.
Yes.
Second that.
Second.
And vote, yes.
And yes.
Okay. So we're going to table 11:17, 21. Grant Administration Draft Policy and Revised Grant Proposal Form. What changes were made? Because this is.
It was very slight changes.
Okay, because this looks, this is very similar to the last one.
Yeah, I just, through speaking with Dennis, actually, he, he mentioned it, it might be helpful. Some of these, some of these changes, I mean, some of them are just grammatical or capitalization. But he mentioned, and maybe Melissa, you could speak to this. Now that we have this grant management form, would it make sense to add project manager as well as grant writer at the top of the grant request? Well, actually, are we speaking about the grant administration policy first or the grant proposal forms?
We can talk about either. I, I was under the assumption that the, that grant management is, well, not the assumption, is, is that written into the, into the job description of the town administrator? Because they generally are the grant manager.
So I had made, after speaking with the, with Dennis, I had made some edits to the grant management, and then it got sent back to the accountant. I'm happy with the way that it appears in front of us, this draft.
So with the exception of the grant request information form,
so that was, that's, I mean, a separate thing. I mean, they're on the same line on the agenda, but I, I figured we'd take them up one by one. And the, this one, I had already made my edits too, and then it came back from the accountant. The grant request form, I just, it came up when I was speaking with Dennis, and so I, we took a look at it together and just made a couple of small edits. Put source of the grant funding, whether it's a state or federal agency, which could be figured out, but might be helpful to know right off the bat. And then really just added project manager because this new grant management policy, you know, uses the term project manager a lot in addition to grant writer. Because some of the people who write grants are department heads or county employees on salary or not on salary, but are working hourly, and some of them are specifically grant writers. We have that separate one. So I just wanted to clarify that. That either, either type of person could submit the form.
Okay. This looks fine, and, and the, the, I mean, you know, this is exactly the right way of doing it, to actually talk to the grant writers. Because they're the ones that are actually filling out the form. So, yeah, I've got, I've got no, I've got no problem with the, the changes that you made. And I, what, and the, this one that came back, the actual grant management document, what did the accountant change?
No, she just approved Justin's changes.
You approved Justin's changes?
All right. So the only thing I would do on the proposal form is just separate grant writer and project manager names so that it's two, because it may not be the same people.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. Yeah, I think we can just put project manager line on below grant writer.
Okay, yep.
Direct. That's. So with that change, I, I move that we accept the grant management, the grant administration policy and, and the grant proposal form as, as that's going to be the changes as now.
Second.
Yes.
And yes.
So I just, yeah. Oh, yes. I just moved that. And then I figure for the grant management, we're, we're not making changes today. No, I'm making changes. So, but if you want to, you want to put your initials on it?
Yeah.
We've got a list there. Okay. Item number two, new business, access to council draft policy. We haven't heard back from council yet. I'm a little surprised. But given that this is a holiday week, perhaps they are busy. So I would expect that, so I, so that I, I'm going to table that until the next meeting. And if we don't hear from, if you don't hear from them press on Monday.
I'll send them a reminder.
You can send them a reminder. Or, or you can send a reminder now to say that we'd like to hear from them prior to our meeting on, on the first. That's the first, right? Is, is the next meeting. New business. County Commissioner Adams.
Yes, we received $3,150 through the recycling dividends program at the Department of Environmental Protection. So I'll just need you to vote to accept it. And Steve, I'll have you sign it at the end.
That's terrific. Who wrote this grant?
Me.
Is that more than we received last year?
No, it's right around the line. It's based on your certain criteria that we meet in our size of our town and all that.
That's great. And this was a grant many years ago where that we didn't even really apply for. As a matter of fact, Ken started the process of applying for it. It was just something that we just, money we just didn't pay. So grant wiring works. Uh-oh.
Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry, I make a motion to approve the, to accept the award.
Second.
I, oh, yes.
And yes.
I will just take, I will just take grant money.
Be careful what you say.
Yeah, I know, I know. I said grant money.
Be careful what you say.
In response to the town, please, nobody edit my words. Valley Galley prepares slash transfer.
Yes. So I'm just making you aware that two of the faucets in the Valley Galley needed to be repaired. So we did have a plumber come out and fix it, and they, you know, bought basic fixtures. But however, we don't have enough money. There's not going to be enough money to cover it because you're only approved $1,500 for repairs at Valley Galley. And with the water bill and the terminus that comes, that leaves us about $200. And we're guessing this bill's going to be about $600. So the town has two ways to do, deal with this. We can just go right to the Finance Committee and ask for a reserve fund transfer, and they would handle it. Or you are allowed to increase by Select Board vote and Finance Committee vote the annual expenditure for Valley Galley for this year, if you want.
And where, where would the money come from if we increase? Would it come from the reserve funds?
So no, that's a revolving account. So it's the monies that are collected from the rents. But right now, they're only allowed to spend $1,500 of it. So if you increased, you voted, both you and the Finance Committee to increase, that they could spend up to, you know, I would probably say maybe $2,500 just to be safe, because I haven't gotten the bill yet. You could do it that way, or a reserve fund.
So I, I personally don't, I personally don't like taking money out of the reserve fund if we don't have to. The, the revolving fund that we put in place is, again, it's rents taken in, and then that money, just like if you were a personal property owner and, or rents taken in, and then we spend money from those, from those, from those rents, which is not, so therefore, technically, you're not taking it from the tax payer. You're taking it from the renter, I mean, theoretically. I would, I would like to, to, I would like, I would like a motion to do the, do the second one, to ask if we raise the, the limit on Valley Galley to $2,500. And Steve, the Finance Committee will vote, will vote for it as long as that's proper procedure. Because that makes a whole lot more sense to me personally.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah, I would second the motion to raise the Valley Galley repairs to $2,500 from $1,500.
Okay. So I vote yes?
And yes.
Okay. And we're going to, as part of that motion, I guess, we're going to. So that's what I'm actually, what I'm actually ask? We don't make a motion to ask the Finance Committee?
No, no, I'll go to their meeting next week, so I will bring it up at their meeting.
Okay. Sure. Copier.
Yes, I'm just making you aware that the copier is set to be replaced in fiscal year 23. It has been making some atrocious noises. I've had it fixed once already, and unfortunately, it's doing it again. I did ask for some prices from Berkshire Graphics for next year, and she had, wrote back to me and said that we could get a similar machine next year for $7,000. However, she said, we're such a great customer. They have a demo machine that's a color machine, retails at $15,000, and they're willing to give it to us for $5,000, but we would have to purchase it now. I just wanted to give you the options to decide what you want to do. My guess is if, if you want to wait till July, I'm probably going to sink a couple of other hundred dollars into this fixing whatever piece that is that's banging around in there. But color copiers are pretty expensive, and the toner is expensive too. So I'm, you know, I don't really have a recommendation either way, but.
Yeah, that's my, that's my, that's my concern, is that color copier, you know, obviously, you've got a, you know, you have extra toner. I, and I do work in an office where you have a color copier. That toner's not cheap. And not always available. That's the other thing. So, and I'm, and I'm also concerned that, I mean, while, while, yeah, I, I, I'm just concerned that the, that the color copier may be a, I mean, that maybe something that may drain extra money in it. I would rather just replace the machine when we can. Is Berkshire Graphics the only, they're the only people?
No, there's another place, McFarlane, but usually they don't even come close to.
Do we put this out to?
I just have to get quotes because it's under $10,000. Again, we've been using them for such a long time. But I just wanted to make you aware, you don't have to vote on anything unless you wanted to buy the color one. I just.
So for the, for the color one, would that be from reserve fund request?
Yeah. Which would be the Finance Committee. But, you know, if you supported it and you wanted to get a color copier, I'll bring it to them next week.
Well, I think it's, I, I just, I, I think it, I think it could be a real dramatically dramatic rise in expense to the town. I, I, I think we're, we do okay with what we, what we currently have. If there aren't special needs for people to, to copy and color, there are companies out here that will do that type of, that generally, most of our work is, almost all of our work is in black and white. And it's easier to maintain a, I mean, can you imagine what we're going to have to do with a $15,000 machine if it decides to go wonky? I think, I believe the repair's going to be more than a $7,000 machine. So I, I would, I would, I would move to, to, to see if we can keep it, keep it rolling until. Okay. Okay. F-23, cost of living increase?
So in preparation for the upcoming budget meetings, departments have requested what COLA number they should be using for their proposed budgets for wages and salaries. The Finance Committee will have this on their agenda as well, but social security is going to be 5.9%. Which is usually the question I'm asked by you and the Finance Committee.
I would like to hear what the Finance Committee
recommends first.
Recommends first. And by the way, we should, we should write, but again, everybody, COLA is Cost of Living Adjustment?
Yes.
Okay. It's not purchasing COLA. Does that, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to refer to them. New business, number two, review interested parties for Bylaw Review Committee and discuss making appointments. So this is interesting. I just received a, a, a response from the, from legal counsel. Had time to read it.
Yeah.
Do you want me? Sure, if you'd like.
So this was in response to our questions about the Bylaw Review Committee because the bylaw calls for an initial one-year appointment and then elections thereafter. But obviously, if we point out for one year, that would end in November when we don't have an election. So we asked them, basically, should we go until the next election or how do we deal with this? And we also asked what, how the staggering would work. And I think those were the main questions. Oh, and what about non-residents serving on the committee? So this is what Brian Roddy wrote. "I recommend that appointments be made now that only run for the annual election of 2022. This is to be a new elected town office, so new members should be elected at the annual election, not requiring a special election. While it doesn't match up perfectly with the bylaw, a year and a half appointment or requiring a special election would be even more outside the bylaw's provisions. The general rule for appointed boards and committees is that unless there is an express limitation to residents or registered voters, a non-resident is eligible. To the extent that you receive any interest from a non-resident, however, you could advise them that after the first five or six months, they would no longer be able to be on this committee. That might be enough to dissuade them. The board could itself only select residents as well. Since the bylaw does not specify, the board has some flexibility as to the staggering as long as all five seats are elected next spring. I would suggest two seats for three years, two seats for two years, and one seat for one year. But my only reason is that way only one member needs to run for reelection in 2023 instead of two. Either way would be valid, whether we do one for three years, two for two, and two for one, or as he was here. Starting in 2023, all of the elections for the Bylaw Review Committee would be for three-year terms." And I, just for clarification, I paraphrased to try and make some more clear because he was responding to questions. The way I read the applications, it seems to me that we have five residents, voters who have expressed interest and two non-residents, including one non-resident who was, who was also recently appointed to the church. I, I don't know where you're at, Steve, but I would think because they would only, you know, we could appoint non-voters, but when it comes to election time, like Brian said, they couldn't serve anymore. So I would, I would think since we got the number of voters as seats on the committees who are interested, I would be willing to appoint those five voters and let the non-voters know, say them for their interest, but explain to them that, you know, in five months, they wouldn't be able to be on it anymore. And like I said, one of them, we've already appointed to the town Charter Committee, so he's, he's, he's. like I said, one of them, we've already appointed to the town charter committee, so he's 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 getting involved in a different way. And we also have the renewable energy committee, which is not going to be an elected committee, which we could certainly consider non-residents. For if they want to want to get involved in that way. But to me, it 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 makes sense, like Brian says, to appoint people who are going to be able to run in May.
Right, yeah. So I I I agree with you a hundred percent. I was thinking about how, especially when you're talking about bylaws, which are the laws that we're all gonna follow when we run the town. When the town is run. How important is that that the people who are reviewing them, you know, have a stake in it? And I I I'm heartened to see that people who are not registered voters are still still interested, that they do want to participate. That's great. And I agree with you also that that there are plenty of other committees or commissions or boards or groups that that people who are not who are not registered voters can participate in. So just reviewing this, so the five people, so so.
You actually have six.
What?
Did Chris Blair withdraw his interest?
I thought that was.
Oh, is that what it was? Oh, no, because I was confused too. But on this November twelfth, Chris Blair said, I sent you a note requesting that I be considered for inclusion on the committee chart with reviewing and making recommendations of the bylaws of Monterey. Owing to some personal responsibilities, I would be unavailable to serve on this committee and would like to withdraw my prior request.
Okay.
So the five I have, and I also want to make a disclaimer that Mari Ina is my aunt. But I don't foresee any financial impact of being involved in in.
Do you want to be on the bylaw committee?
Yeah, so the five that I had was Mari Ina.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Jeff Zimmerman, Pauline Banducci, Stuart Littlin, and David Myers. And then Chris Blair and Steve Moore had expressed interest, but then had withdrawn or rescinded. And then Nancy Tomasevic and Ron Winters had also expressed interest, but they are not registered voters in Monterey, and therefore, when May comes around, they would not be able to run in the election. So they would have a very short stint if we did appoint them. And so I I would okay, move to appoint Mari Ina, Jack Zimmerman, Pauline Banducci, Stuart Littlin, and David Myers to the bylaw review committee until the annual.
I I I second I second your motion. And I vote yes.
And yes.
Okay, so we've established bylaw reviews. Any applause from the audience? Getting stuff done.
Don't you have to vote on the on who's gonna vote on who's gonna run in each year?
Thank you for, thank you for reminding us, you were absolutely right. So how would you like to do it? So I I I like the the attorney's recommendation of doing.
Three. Yeah, and I don't know that we have to do that at this second. Well, I would I would go with what he said. Two for three years, two for two years, and one for one year. And then, of course, everything is normal after that first election.
Well, let's listen, let's, we establish the organization, let's establish the the voting policy too, to give to give everybody one enough time to to digest it and get it ready for for annual town meetings. So I would thought, so you can make that, why don't you make that motion then?
Well, and the only other thing that I was wondering, maybe this is something that's standard, or maybe it's some a question for counsel, but on the ballot, would people have to run for each individual seat? Or would they have to run for the three-year seats, the two-year seats, and the one-year seat?
So that's the way it works, yeah. Because we've had that for other for other groups here.
But I mean, we couldn't, if we if we have six people who want to run, they'll have to choose whether they're running for three, two, or one, but within the three-year bracket, it would be select two.
Right. Yeah, that's a, that's, I mean, that's the way we're in general. So, yeah, if somebody, yeah, somebody wants to, right, if somebody, listen, may, only one person may want to run for a three-year seat.
Yeah.
You know, or only one person may want to run for a one-year seat, but that's up to, that's up to them.
All right, so I don't know if I motion it. Yeah, I would motion to have the the voting beginning and at the annual election in twenty twenty two for the bylaw review committee to have two seats for three years, two seats for two years, and one seat for one year.
I second that motion. Vote yes?
Yes.
Great. Good, thank you, Don.
My pleasure.
Okay. Speaking of Don Coburn.
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me. Thank you, and Jeff Zimmerman. Thank you for the appointment, I really appreciate it. I thought I also heard Mr. Coburn ask about who's gonna chair.
He didn't, he didn't ask that.
Oh, well, I I I would like to ask it, if I may, I apologize for the sound problem, but. Isn't it, how will the chair be appointed?
You're going to, you're gonna meet, generally, these group, you're gonna meet, and then you will have a discussion amongst yourselves and appoint a chair at that time. We're not the, we're not in a position to appoint a chair.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so I, open media law complaint received. So I have, I have in my hand here a open media law complaint form filed by Dr. Donald Coburn against John Wengold. Let me just read it for the record. And and then we can open it up for for discussion. Selectman John, this is a quote from Mr. Coburn on the form. Selectman John Wengold sent an email on Wednesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty one, to Stephen Weiss and Justin Maycock, the two other members of the three-member Monterey Select Board. He began by writing, quote, I am hereby notifying the Monterey S B that I am boycotting, parentheses, my civil disobedience, and parentheses, any future S B meetings in which Steve Weiss is chair, and Weiss is in parentheses. He then described in detail his criticisms criticisms of Mr. Weiss. He concluded these allegations, quote, personal injection. Personal injection into the, quote, police investigation, then quote, continued oceans of provocations to fellow S B members and the public, dot, dot, dot. Conducting S B business, dot, dot, without S B authority, dot, dot, dot. Allowing improper posts of S B meetings and agenda items to the public, violating the O M L twice in the past and likely numerous other times currently, and abuse of a position as the chairman of the S B by continually, by continued bullying and badgering of Justin Maycock in parentheses on issues. Mr. Wengold added that he would not participate in any meetings. The Select Board continues its policy of allowing free comment by the public throughout meetings, which the policy, quote, allowed mob rule and control of the S B meetings by a minority of the town residents, end quote. Next paragraph, this is an intentional violation by an experienced attorney at law, period. His complete familiarity with the law is evidenced by his own filing of many O M L complaints against his colleagues, containing well over thirty specific alleged violations, period. In each instance, he's had the benefit of reading your reasons, mostly rejecting his claims, period. And his claims have frequently included charging illegal deliberation by email, period. The above violations, comma, all patently deliberative statements on subject matters should not be countenanced, period. A full one thousand dollar fine should be imposed, period. And then the action that Mr. Coburn suggests is, there's nothing, quote, there's nothing the Select Board can do to remedy this situation, period. I believe Mr. Wengold's charges are false, period. But even if any of them were true, neither the Chair nor the Select Board can honorably act in response to Mr. Wengold's irresponsible decision to withhold his participation on the Select Board until he gets his way, period. The only remedy that makes sense is the imposition of the maximum fine on Mr. Wengold, dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty one, by Donald S. Coburn. Any comments on this?
Well, I think obviously, the Select Board is the subject of the complaint, but specifically John Wengold. And we've dealt with this before, because there is at least one occasion where the Select Board was the subject of the complaint. And I was the specific person in this instance where the Select Board was the subject of the complaint. You were the person, and usually the person who was specifically named takes charge. I think especially in this instance, where the alleged violation was an email that didn't, that was sent by one member and responded to, and was not responded to. I don't see any way in which it would make sense for us to respond, right? I think only John can really respond to this. Right? I guess I know the whole board is is the subject of the complaint, but in this case, in this case, it was very clear, it, the alleged violation was only by one person, and it and it doesn't involve other parties at all. And so I would just say it's up to John to respond to this, right? We can't.
So.
What could we do?
So, yeah, so, well, I agree that he should respond to this. The 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 catch twenty-two, I guess, is that if you're boycotting every Select Board meeting until May, how do you actually respond to it? But catch twenty-two aside, Mr. Coburn does bring out a very good point, and that is that, you know, it's one thing to take complaints against people for for violations, but then but then to go ahead and do it yourself. It seems to be particularly egregious. I mean, I mean, the the open meeting law, and my understanding of it, but I'm not an attorney, is the first, one of the first rules of the open meeting law is you don't send an email sitting your opinion. This has opinion on written all over it. And so I guess the point that, and Mr. Coburn's here, he can speak for himself, but I guess the point is that, you know, that the board has endured reams of of documents of open meeting law complaints from Mr. Wengold. And a lot of it complaining about the fact that people are doing business via email, and then he goes ahead and does it. So I, I'm sorry, speaking for you, Mr. Coburn, yes, you have your hand raised.
I agree completely with Justin's analysis. I'm not asking that the board do anything, and under the open meeting law, you're not required to do anything. You let the ten days go by, and then I file it with the with the state. So to me, it's over at this point before the board. Thank you, Justin.
There you go. Anything from the from the public, or shall we move on?
Another shame collect.
Okay, so let's let's go on. Mr. Levin, the R A O report update, recommendation for hiring a temporary employee.
Good morning. If you remember, the last time I was here, I gave a summary of the public records law, as well as the status of the pending public records requests. The request with respect to Mr. Wengold, I mentioned, indicated that I had petitioned the supervisor of public records for alternative remedies, one, to relieve the town of responding to them. And and or, or not and or, but alternatively, to extend the time within which the town had to respond by thirty days, both of which are provided by statute. The supervisor issued its opinion and decision and denied the town's request to be relieved from responding to the record request, but did approve the extension based on the on the presented argument that the original timeframe would be too burdensome for the town to respond to the numerous requests of Mr. Wengold. At the prior Select Board meeting, I had indicated that I, it was my recommendation that the Select Board consider hiring a temporary employee to process the Wengold record requests. The 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 bulk of the record requests all involve the town administrator in terms of her records, her records within the town. And it seems to me that if we want to end this process in a sensible fashion, it would make sense to have someone other than the town administrator reviewing the town records for the purpose of compiling the requests, and therefore, by doing that, there would not be any suggestion that records were omitted or or otherwise not properly responded to. The, to hire someone to do this, under the, under the statute, the record access officer is permitted to assess a fee for a collection of of records. The supervisor endorsed that authority within the the decision. And and acknowledged that the that the amount that can be charged can be up to twenty five dollars an hour for research, population, parking, and so forth of the records. I, in a somewhat inexact, but but good faith estimate, believe it's going to take about forty hours to review the town records in order to comply with the ninety-two specific requests of Mr. Wengold. Some of them are very discreet, and they'll take less time, they're asking for a specific document or a specific set of documents. Others are emails or other records that span anywhere from two months to six months. And so trying to balance the various requests, my guess, and my best estimate, and that's all I can really do, is figure that it would take about forty hours. If, Mr. Wengold has been notified that he will be charged for this time pursuant to the statute. My obligation is to give him an estimate, I mean, obviously, I cannot predict in advance what the cost is, the cost is gonna be. It could be less, it could be more, and you know, I just don't know. There's also a copying charge component. Unfortunately, the the statute limits it to five cents a copy. So, but I assumed a certain number of copies, given the volume of the request, and and the estimate is included, the reimbursement for those copies at the five five cents per copy. If the Select Board chooses not to, well, let me rephrase that. I think that the the opportunity to compile the records with a temporary employee is likely to occur more quickly than it would be if. to occur more quickly than it would be if, if the select board did not hire a temporary employee. The reason why I say that is that a temporary employee would be able to devote their full time and attention to going through the documents that produce the records. And I, I just don't think it's realistic to expect the town administrator to set everything else aside and work solely on these record requests, which was one of the reasons why I asked the supervisor of public records to extend the time. So if the select board were not to approve hiring a temporary employee, then it would be my consideration that town administrator should probably spend no more than four hours a week on the compliance, because I think there are, there's other town business that needs to be, needs to be done, and I wouldn't want, in my mind, as a citizen, I wouldn't want the focus to be on these documents solely. So that's the status of, of the John Weingold record request. On the MC Tomasovich record request, as you know, I submitted a memo to a select board regarding the process the select board needs to go through in order to determine what, if any, of the requested information can be publicly released, and I await your determination as to where that stands. I have told this process that I will let her know when we expect to produce the record, if we can produce the record. So once the select board has made a determination, then we keep it advised to the I.A. advisor.
So wouldn't that be a determination of counsel? Did we, do we ask counsel about that? Because it's asking for notes of, of things that happened in executive session?
We did not, but I would say that the item you discussed in that executive session is not over with, so you would not be approving and releasing the minutes as of right now.
So as a, as a policy, that's what we've just mentioned, we cannot, if it's ongoing, and if there's, if something is still happening, and we can't release records?
It's my, and that's my understanding from reading the open meeting law to the guide, but should we, I mean, I believe we need to meet in executive session to discuss whether or not those minutes can be made.
But if the standard is, and again, we can, we can, we can get verification of counsel because I don't want to misspeak. If the standard is, if something is an ongoing investigation, and somebody wants something that pertains to the ongoing investigation, you cannot release any, any of the documents until that investigation is concluded, and that is, and that's in, I mean, that's, that's in the language about executive session. It's just like any other minutes, just like your regular minutes, right? However, once they conclude, once, once the investigation is concluded, then, then yes, you can, you can do it. So I, I would think that the step, that the, that the public records statute would, would also have some reference to that.
Well, the pub, the public records statute basically has a catch-all provision that says that anything that, that's considered confidential or exempt, or under, now, the statutory scheme is not, at least at that time, considered a public records. The, the open meeting law essentially says that certain things in executive session are not typically released until the select board makes a determination as to whether or not the matter is concluded, as to whether or not portions of the record can be released because they don't, they don't fall within the, the criteria that's protected. And it also, the open meeting law also requires that the, that the, in this case, the select board shall at reasonable intervals review the minutes of executive sessions to determine if the provisions warrant continued non-disclosure. So while I think that practically speaking, you can simply tell me that, that it's still part of an ongoing matter that it can't be released, I think that the, the more proper form would be for the select board in executive session to have a conversation and say that we believe that there is nothing about this that can be released, and, and that would meet the periodic review requirement, the reasonable interview review requirement of the statute.
Okay. Mr. Coburn has his hand raised.
John, a question. Doesn't the person requesting the records have to first put up the amount of money, in this case, the $1,000, from John before the select board goes about hiring somebody to do the work?
The statute is ambiguous in terms of whether or not the funds have to be put up in advance. It's clear that, that the, that the fee would be due before the documents could be turned over. So I am under the present opinion, unless someone can show me something otherwise, that the town still has an obligation to compile the records, but that the requester is not entitled to them until they pay the fee.
Well, has the requester clearly been told that he's going to owe $1,000 or more, and does he want to continue with the request? Has that happened?
A letter has gone out to Mr. Weingold indicating the amount of, of fees that are estimated, that's a requirement of the statute, and the letter also asked Mr. Weingold to confirm that he would be paying the fee upon receipt.
Okay. Thank you.
So if we're going to be consistent, every public records request in the past, we have always required people to pay upfront before any time is spent on it. I know Justin likes consistency.
I think that from, from a policy perspective, that's certainly a prudent way to handle the fee, from my perspective, because it means that if someone isn't willing to pay the fee, then the town doesn't have to undergo the expense of having to compile the records, and then they just end up sitting in a, in a drawer. I think that particularly, you know, where the, in the instance where the magnitude of the, of the time required is so significant, but I, that's not a, that's not a policy that I can make. That's only, I think, a policy that the, that the town can make.
So we are a small town, and this policy was, was put in place for the exact reasons that you're saving, to have somebody spend some time away from their regular job to compile these documents. You're still spending money to have them do that in their time. So it seemed for a small town, it's, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to, to request, to continue to request some money upfront. Obviously, if somebody really wants these documents, they can, they, they can, they can pay for them. I don't know if we ever made it a, I mean, did we make it a formal policy? Did we ever make it a formal policy? I don't recall in the past.
To the records access officer, I'm just letting you know that since I have been fulfilling public records requests for sixteen years, we have always required payment upfront.
So, yes.
John, can I have, you, you, you catch two coaching methods to do this. One is to hire a temporary person to get the job done, or have the town administrator do it four hours a week. That second option goes beyond the thirty days. Can we get extensions beyond the thirty days to do that, or?
So it's, it's actually thirty business days, and it's thirty business days, it's actually a total of fifty-five business days from November first, because the statute allows ten business days. I, as a, by simply properly responding within the ten business days, can extend that by another fifteen business days, and then we sock additional relief for thirty more business days. So we have time to do this in the, in theory, in the ordinary course of business, if that's what the town desires.
Well, I, I think it makes more sense to, to do it in the ordinary course of business than to hire somebody for a very specific job. I think it's going to take, it'd take time for somebody to get up to speed hiring a temporary employee, and then, again, what, right, what if, yeah, I, I, I don't understand why.
And it would also, I would not be working because they would be on my computer, so it would, you know, it's an inconvenience to me either way. It's easier than me trying to show someone where things might be and research, it's just going to be easier for me to do it.
Can we, so since we have fifty-five days, would it be prudent to, to wait until you get a response, we get a response with, with payment from, from Mr. Weingold? Because obviously, or at least we can wait until the next session to, to see if you, if you do get a response from Mr. Weingold, because if he doesn't want to pay the $1,000, and then, then you don't have to continue.
I, I want to come back. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding the mathematics here. The fifty-five, fifty-four days you, you talked about start November first.
Business, business days.
I understand. So we're now on to November twenty-fourth, so you can take fifteen days out of that count. So now you're asking, in the thirty-nine day period, at best, maybe even less, to get this job done?
Well, thirty, thirty-nine business days equates to about, almost sixty, sixty calendar days, so.
But at four, I, I, that's not where I'm going. At four hours a day.
Four hours a week.
I'm sorry, four hours a week, you need ten weeks.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's just my estimate.
And I understand that, and I appreciate it. I just think that we're putting ourselves in a bind, but I, and, you know, this is not my decision to make.
Is there a, is there a, is there a deadline for Mr. Weingold to respond to your letter?
I did not give him a deadline. I simply asked him to confirm that he would be making payment before I would authorize the work to be done.
What happens if he's boycotting the letters from, from, from the town?
Well, if he's failing, if he refuses to respond, I guess the best I can do is simply send him a letter and say that, I'm assuming that since you refuse to confirm, that that means that you do not wish us to proceed with the, with the records request, and that we will not, we will continue it, and I'll give him the right of arts of appeals under the state statute, and appeal that decision to the supervisor.
When did you send out the letter?
That letter went out, it was, it was either yesterday or Monday.
Oh, you don't have to be exactly, so it was, it was this, essentially this. Okay, so we'll probably know in a week or two. So I would, I would say right now, I would, I would say that we do not hire a temporary employee, that we wait to see if, if Mr. Weingold responds to the letter, and put that, put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Or obviously, you can contact us if you do get a response. That we're, that as per monetary policy, we will look for payment in advance. Obviously, it's less time that's used than, than, but definitely refunded. And when it comes to this, Tomasovich's, again, I, I understand, so we can certainly, we can certainly have discussion in the executive session. However, it's my understanding right now that this, that, that, because it's part of the current investigation, that these, these documents are exempt from the, from the public records law, and however, they will be made available once the investig, once the investigation is concluded, or we have an, in, in executive session, there's a discussion and a vote to, to release all or part of the documents.
Yeah, I mean, we'd need to discuss, because we can't discuss the particulars. So if you read, you know, the executive session purposes, and then you read open meeting law about why we go into executive session and why, why documents and minutes from executive session may stay confidential, we'd have to discuss that relation to the particulars in executive session. There's no way to do it appropriately in open meeting. So we should meet in executive session, or sometime when we are meeting in executive session after this.
But currently, would you agree with me that we can, we can tell the RAO here that, that right that currently, until we have that discussion, that, that those particular documents are, we would consider exempt until we have that discussion?
Well, it is my understanding from the open meeting law, I, that's my understanding, is that those confidential documents are still confidential, but I, I don't think there's any way to really appropriately deal with it in open meeting.
Right, but I think, are you looking for?
Let me, let me see if I can help you out here. I think maybe the best, best answer to the question is that, that the, that the select board will address the question at the next time it needs an executive session, and, and will report to me as to whether or not it is at that point in time appropriate to release any of the records, and then I will report to Ms. Tomasovich.
I think that's very well put. John has his hand up.
In light of the, the conflict between what John has said about charging under the statute, which is, is ambiguous, and the practice as Melissa has described it, shouldn't you take a vote right now that the $1,000 has to be paid in advance?
Well, I, I, we're, I, I guess we didn't take, I didn't call for a vote because this is a, this is a longstanding policy of the town. I mean, I'm willing to uphold that, that policy, that, that all records requests, that, that if you're, if there's payment involved, that, that the payment comes in, in advance. You do not, we do not release the documents until payment is made.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I trust the records access officer to do her job in accordance with the statute and monetary policies.
Okay, so what, so I, so that's, so my motion is to, is to formalize that policy, and so that the, the public records access officer knows, can make these, can make these statements.
Yeah, so what, the policy is that no documents, the documents that fulfill their request shall not be sent to the requester until payment is received?
Well, the, the payment is assessed first by the public records officer, access officer. That payment, that estimate of the payment, of the, of the amount due, is sent to the 请求er, and that, that请求er has the opportunity to either pay the estimated amount and receive the documents, or, or make a statement that they're not, they're not going to pay the amount, and therefore will tell not to.
So no work will be done to fulfill a public records request until payment is received? That's the simplest way to.
That's another way of saying it.
Do you think that's in compliance with the state law?
I, I would want to look into that more carefully. I'm not sure I can, I can.
I just, yeah.
I mean, it, it, I think that it, it sounds like it's the, it's the way in which most towns would approach it. I mean, that, you know, they don't, you know, from a practical perspective, you don't want to go through the process if you're not going to do it. Whether or not there's a specific case that has decided that, as I said, I feel, I felt that the public records law was in as I said, I feel, I felt that the public records law was in, but it was, whether or not it had, it could or should or had to be collected up front. But I think that since it is a, since it is a reimbursement to the municipality, I think the municipality clearly has authority to determine when the, the payment is gonna be there. But I can't, I don't know, Justin, whether or not there's a, there's a, there's precedent independently for the RAO to say, you must pay your funds.
Okay. But there is precedent in town?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to clarify, because I, I know last time we made a policy regarding records requests, we learned that it was in direct contradiction to the statute and couldn't be upheld. That's my understanding of our, of our policy.
So I, I think if, if you, if you were to, if the policy was that if the RAO determines that a fee should be charged, and, and the RAO follows the statutory structure of how that gets transmitted to the requestor, that the, that the town will require payment in advance, I think that that's consistent with the statute.
Yeah. So. So I'd like to make that a policy.
Yeah.
Or uphold, uphold that as a policy because it's the, uh, for, for the town of Monterey when it comes to public records?
Sure.
But yes?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification of that.
Steve, may I, may I interrupt? I, I actually have to run, but I have something to say to the two of you. Apparently, last, during the last meeting, one of my responses was disproportionate with the importance of the topic, inappropriate from my perspective, after I thought about it. And I'm not asking for any responses from either one of you. I'm, I'm here to apologize for poor behavior. I can't promise it's not gonna happen again in the future. You can't change the record spots, but I hope that it doesn't happen again. With that, we should both, a very happy Thanksgiving, and see you next week. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
And to you too, Don.
Okay, so have, have we, have we?
So I do have, I, there is one other pending public records request. And I have made multiple requests to Terry Walker, who was the person who the public records request was directed to. She did apparently produce a certain amount of records to Melissa as the requestor. I had asked both Melissa and Terry to give me a set of copies of those, so that I could see what was produced. Melissa provided me with what she received. Terry has not yet provided me with what she says that was provided. And, um, the original, my original email requesting information from Terry was I asked her, tell me what has been requested, and what was left to be provided, if anything, whether or not she felt anything was exempt, and also how much time she thought it would take to compile the records. Frankly, I thought those were pretty neutral, benign RAO requests. I made the same request of, of town administrator relative to Mr. Weingold's request. We got pretty immediate answers. I have not had a response from Terry to that email, which I followed up with a subsequent email or reminder, and then a third reminder. After the third reminder, I got an email back from Terry asserting that since the original request that I made was made to her before I had taken the oath of office, that it was inappropriate and illegal, and didn't require a response. I will repeat my request to her, even though it did get repeated twice after I was sworn in, but I just would like the board to know that I'm, I'm not getting cooperation from Terry regarding the outstanding records request. And, you know, from my, from my perspective, I can't do my job if I, if I'm not getting cooperation from the town employees. So I'm just alerting.
What is, um, what can you do if, if, if somebody just doesn't comply? As a record tackler?
Well, I mean, I, I, you know, I guess it's, um, you know, the records, the, the records that are being requested are within the town records. In theory, Terry's not the only one who has access to those records. I mean, she's the, she's the one who has most immediate access, but I would assume that members of the select board could access the records, or others could be asked to access the records. I don't have any, any enforcement powers other than the, the power of persuasion, which clearly has, doesn't seem to be working in this case. So, um, you know, the, the, essentially, the town will be out of compliance with the public record statute. And it's already been out of compliance for a very long period of time in terms of getting these spot out. If Terry were to simply send me back a response and saying I've given, I produced everything that is responsive, well, that's, you know, that's her prerogative. I then would have to sift, sift through everything and determine whether or not I agree with that conclusion. But I haven't even gotten that answer.
Okay, and one, and one, one last thing, and then move on. Is, so, um, the mechanics of this, of, so she, so, so Terry said, well, your first request was when you weren't sworn in, so therefore it's not valid. But your second request, that, so, I mean, how does that work? I mean, you're still making the request, so you've been sworn in, right?
Yeah, I was, I was sworn in, um, three days after I made the first request. If you recall, I was appointed on a Wednesday evening. The, the first response from the town for the Weingold records request had to be filed by try to your budget. I didn't, my main focus was not getting sworn in. My main focus was doing what was right for the town in terms of providing the appropriate response. I think I would also suggest that, um, that I indicated to Terry that if she thought that I should be sworn in, and there was some question as to whether or not I even need to be sworn in, whether or not an RAO is, is, requires you. I said that I'd be available by Zoom or to meet with her, and she never responded to either of those requests. So I ended up being sworn in by a notary public because I just figured someone was gonna raise it, and this was just the easiest way to eliminate it as an issue, whether it was necessary or not. Subsequent to being sworn in, to answer your question, I, I did then resend the request. So, you know, in, in my mind, there's no, there was no validity to, to Terry's response to me, but.
Okay, but now technically, you sent the second request, you sent who you were after, who's after you were sworn in.
Well, and I'm now gonna send the third request after her telling me that she's not responding.
And you're still sworn in.
Yes.
So do that, report back to the board if you can, as to what the, you know, it's, either everybody complies or nobody complies. You know, I mean, I think everybody should, should follow the same rules. I thank you for your, for your, for your work on getting, on getting this, these documents. So you will come, you'll come back, you'll come back on the first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll appear, yes.
You'll appear, that's right, that's right, okay.
One point. Terry is an employee of the town. You two are the executive of the town. You have a right to order her to comply so that the town is in compliance with the statute. And if she doesn't comply, you have a right to dismiss her or otherwise discipline her?
That duly noted. Let's, let's try the, let's try the, 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 the third, the third, uh, letter, and then see where we're at after that. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, let, let's move on. Day after Thanksgiving. Thank you, John. So, um, day after Thanksgiving. So in the old days, we used to give employees gift cards and turkeys and this and that, and it turns out that we were supposed to be doing that. So generally, as a policy, we, we grant the employees time off. Is that a correct statement? I believe there's a request for the day after Thanksgiving to be one of those days.
Yes, some of the employees have asked me to.
This is something that we've done in the past. And again, it's, it's a, it's a thank you that we can give to the employees that we, you know, again, because we can't give them gifts or cards or turkeys. Generally, well, county services will be, will continue to run. And obviously, we're not expecting any kind of major weather events. So we generally, so, so basically, that's, so that's, so my motion would be to give the town employees the day after Thanksgiving off. Is that, okay? Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, please let the employees know, and it's, again, it's with our appreciation for the work they're doing. Historic District Study Committee reappointments?
So Barbara Swan and Susan Leon's appointments on the Historic District Study Committee have expired, and they were hoping to be reappointed to the Historic District Study Committee. I would move to reappoint them through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to align them with the fiscal year.
Can we make appointments for more than a year? Time to trigger.
I'm sorry. You, you did one-year appointments for everybody else, so I would either suggest going to twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, either way, I just, um, this caught me off guard, and I just feel like it's easier to have. I understand the idea behind one-year appointments, but it's easier to have them all at once, especially for hold committees. I'd be happy to reappoint them for just one year till November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. But I'd prefer, I guess, if we aligned it with June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, or June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So we're going to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and then, and then reappoint everybody at the same rate?
Yes. So I'll make a, a different motion to reappoint Barbara Swan and Susan Leon, the Historic District Study Committee, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I second that motion. I vote yes.
And yes.
Okay. So then everybody's all aligned, and then, I guess they got, they started earlier, and that's the reason why they were misaligned, now they're aligned. Review mail and any correspondence to be sent or signed.
So I will say for A, Karen Jackson's letter, in her correspondence, or this person's correspondence to the board, they did not sign the, the correspondence with their full name. They signed it with a first name of Kay. And I've actually had a little bit of back and forth with this person. And one of the things that I asked for was could they identify themselves appropriately with a first and last name, and even a, a, a street address, maybe. But I have not even heard back with a, with a last name. So it's my understanding that I would still consider this to be anonymous communication. There is a automatic name attached to their email, but on their correspondence, they used a different first name and no last name. I think it's prudent to not accept anonymous communications, and so I think we should table this until we hear back with some identification from the person.
So, um, I agree with you that this, we do have a policy, because I was, I was on the board when we, when we made the policy, that anonymous letters, anonymous communications are not, we don't consider, we are not to read them at the public record, and we don't consider them as a board unless somebody is willing to put their name. And I think it's, I think it's a good idea to put their name and address. We will not read, obviously, people's addresses out loud, but at least a street name so that we can verify that they are who they say they are. A number, unfortunately, a number of people do send out anonymous letters, or letters using different names, fake names. So, um, so in keeping with that longstanding policy and, and in recognition of the, of the, of the research that you've done, Justin, I, I agree with you that we're not going to be reading this, this document. I also understand that we did make a change in the contact form now so that, so that if people do write into the select board, they have to give us their address. And again, this is, we're not to read your address, the members of the public, out, out loud. This is just to make sure that, that who is, the people who are sending us letters, you know, are, are residents.
Well, and, and like I said, I followed up with this person asking, and because I would like, you know, their communication to be dealt with by the board to the extent that it was not anonymous.
Sorry, so if this person does rec, does identify themselves, or if we can determine that they are resident, town resident, then we will certainly, yeah, we will certainly address it. So we're, but failing that, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna discuss it. The next letter is Caleb Stone, Caleb Stone, excuse me, from the Southern Berkshire Ambulance. So this is gonna be, so this is a very interesting thing, Justin, and you're gonna be, you're gonna get to join this part of the discussion on it, because this has been going on for a number of years now. Generally, these ambulance courts are, have been reorganized, or are reorganizing. They're, they, they are in need of funds in order to provide services. However, they will, they do provide services to town of Monterey, regardless of whether you give them a dollar or a million dollars. However, every once in a while, we do receive a request for funds. This is, this is gonna be a discussion that is one of the reasons why it's very important to have this, to, to get about the budget process, because this is certainly part of the budget process. We've generally given, uh, these ambulance courts five thousand dollars, and with a request for their, for financials. Because obviously, we wanna see how they compute Monterey's share. We don't wanna give more than our share, we don't wanna give less than our share, we just wanna give our share. So this letter by Mr. Stone is, uh, is kind of an update, taken over from a previous member. He is, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm sure, he's basically probably gonna, at some point during budget season, wanna come and make a presentation to the board, which I think is fine.
And specifically, he's asking for open money, and so I stopped.
Yes, I just have a few.
Or for service.
I just wanted to look over it one more time before I actually hit send.
And, and, and I would want a determination of how you could actually use ARPA funds to give to, you know, you know, if it was our ambulance corps, it's that's one thing. But I don't know how it's gonna be a learning experience because because I don't know how you'd actually be able to participate in a in a funding or multi-town of funding using specific specific funds. So I would I will say that that obviously, these I I actually had a very good discussion with with Smitty Pigmentelli, your state rep, over this because he is he and other legislators are are interested in this idea of, you know, more of a communal response to emergency services or shared response to community services. I would recommend that that if they start having meetings again, they used to have meetings about it, that that you participate in them. Meanwhile, I would acknowledge the letter and and but I wouldn't think that it would make any sense until we know what's going on with the ARPA monies and we're and we're into the budget season. So this is something that I think that we could hold off until the beginning of the year, certainly. Kathy Kathy Tryon's letter.
So I could summarize that.
Sure.
For the public that's here. Kathy Tryon sent this letter in response to our discussion about the town charter committee appointments and how to make the process work well for Monterey. And she actually provided four pretty specific suggestions for appointing committees, some of which we follow to some degree and some new ideas. So the first point was that instead of asking for a letter of interest, we should have a template for requesting to be considered for a committee. And we do on our select board page have that pretty much that same form. Since we're already I have appointed the bylaw committee and we're requesting appointments for the we're still rounding out the town charter committee to seven members and we're already requesting letters of interest for the renewable energy working group. I don't know to what extent it makes any sense to use that appointment application at this point in those processes since they're already well underway. But for the future, I think it probably makes some sense to have people fill out the appointment application. Because I know like with the bylaw review committee, because we have the same number of voter applicants as seats, we didn't have to discuss much about choosing between people. And that was in part because two people withdrew. But if there are more candidates in seats, it'd be nice to have some kind of uniform. And this would kind of provide that. The second suggestion was we to appoint all committee members till after the date specified to file a letter of interest, which we did for the bylaw review committee. Establish a date in time that letters of interest must be received by the town. And I think, you know, points two and three work, I think, in conjunction with setting a number of seats in advance, which obviously was an oversight of the select board. And then the fourth point I thought was the most interesting because she asked if there's a range of numbers in the number of members on a committee, for example, minimum five to a maximum of nine. My guess is that if you set a cap, you can always appoint have fewer people appointed than a category. So I don't know that a range needs to be specified, but.
Well, there's an amount should be specified. I mean, I think when 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 these committees are or commissions are are set up by the by the people in town, the the second question should always be, how many people are from the committee?
Yeah.
It is because I don't I don't particularly like being in a position of saying, well, this one gets five, this one gets seven, this one gets nine. I don't think that's I don't think that's our job. I think I think it's up to the public to determine, you know, in general, what, you know, if you're gonna set up a committee, then you set up. Now, how when it comes to things like the the renewable energy working group, that that is our job because we, you know, we want to make it a reasonable amount. But typically, five people or seven people have been have been the majority of the have been the appointments. Nine is a nine is a rarity and obviously, three, you see how well three works. Sometimes it doesn't really work for the committee. So so I think there's a really great I think these are really great suggestions. The the form the format, if we have that, we may, you know, I mean, and we do have a call out for for a new group. Yeah, we should make a form that is fill out you can fill out online and submit it, a submittal form for that.
That is, yeah, that's one question I was wondering, Melissa. To what extent, because we have it online as a PDF and obviously, someone can print that out, fill it out, send it in or scan it in. Are there I don't know of any forms on our website. To what extent is that? If it's gonna be incredibly difficult, I don't think it's unreasonable to put just a PDF. But would a form on the website make any sense?
Yeah, I could change it into a form.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it might be that much easier for people to apply. Now, some people don't have internet access, so they would obviously fill out a paper copy. But would be a form on the website?
Yeah, well, it could be you could, yeah, it could be, yeah, it could be done, just like the just like the contact form that's currently that that currently exists right now. Could be a form for, yeah, so where theoretically, if 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 there's an opening in a in a in a in a group, that 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 opening would be that would be mentioned on the website and you can click on that and submit your application, submit your request.
The only our appointment application is pretty straightforward as it is. The only things I might add is does the per does the person know whether this is an open seat in an elected board or is it an appointed board? Because there's there's a difference there. And then the other question I would add is are you a registered voter in the town of Monterey? And maybe explain there, you know, to the extent that this is an elected board. You cannot run for election if you're not a registered voter. And maybe this is getting in maybe this is too complicated, but it would be good to is if it was easy enough to do to communicate that in a form because we've been dealing with that when we've been appointing committees where we appoint non-voters to appointed committees, but obviously, for an elected board, like if we had some there's an open seat on the planning board, I would think and it's it would be up to the select board, but I would think we would want to appoint some voters if to an open seat on the planning board because they can't run for election.
Well, they have to run. We can't we can't appoint an open somebody for an open seat without an election for planning board, can we?
Be appointed till the next election.
So I don't know if it's worth adding that on the appointment application, but just those questions of is this an appointed board or an open seat on a on a regularly elected board? And are you a registered Monterey voter, which of course, we can always check against the voter rolls, but it would just get people thinking, I don't know, that's that's my own thoughts.
All right, so we're gonna look at that, but but this is this is really really some good suggestions. I think you're looking.
I like I appreciate his suggestions because they're concrete and can help avoid, you know, if we clarify everything beforehand, it's later to discuss.
And and suggestions are, you know, suggestions are good. I mean, you will we'll take suggestions. Especially with the, yeah, with the sub彻s. Okay, so I did receive a letter from Mark Maycock. I understand that. I I read it and I actually I actually I thought it was well well thought out. I actually, there's one specific thing that which the cook mentioned that I would like to make a policy. I wanted to have a discussion with him, but but I think but this is something that he's mentioned in the past and I and I agree with him thousand percent. And that is, as a I I would like to make it a policy that that the that the that the select board meet with the town moderator within 30 days of of any town election, town meeting, whether it's a special meeting or an annual town meeting, discuss discuss the operations of of the town meeting. I I think that moderator, what I what I get from this letter is that the moderator moderator feels kind of left out of the process and I think that's that's not right. I think that we should the board should have a a meeting within 30 days. And I think the town should make that policy. I understand that you're that that might want to recuse yourself from this conversation.
So disclaimer to the public is that Mark Maycock is my colleague. I don't think that anything that he's asked for here has a financial impact on me or my family.
And my policy concerns the moderator, no matter who the moderator may be in the future. So it is not specific to Mark Maycock. It's specific to the position of moderator.
Yeah, and I would so you're asking basically that if the select board meet with the moderator and discuss the specific.
Within 30 days to to discuss the meeting. And that's all the aspects of the meeting to get, you know, to basically to keep the the moderator in the loop prior to the meeting. And I think that's I think that I I think it makes perfect I think it makes perfect sense and it also is respectful to the moderator who doesn't necessarily have to try to figure out things on, you know, on on meeting day.
Yeah, I would second that policy.
So I vote yes?
Yes. There's a couple of other things that I think are worth taking up in here. I mean, there's a lot of suggestions or but a lot of different ones, but electronic voting, to me, stood out. And a policy for citizens petitions working with select board and the county and town council having access to council. I know different towns treat that differently. But if we could come up with a policy to help or to to clarify exactly how we proceed with receiving citizen petitions. And I I think that they should be able to be reviewed by town council like the rest of the warrants.
So the so I agree with that. I mean, they should definitely be reviewed, but I think having allowing these people put in a position to ask as town council, this is exactly what town council has asked has asked us not to do because of their because it becomes burdensome burdensome on on town council. However, if they review, but I believe they should actually review all petitions, obviously. And and if they determine something is, you know, has a has some kind of legal difficulties, you know, I then then I think, you know, I certainly have no problem having that discussion with town council and the petitioner. But oh, the person who put down the petition. But but I'm I'm very concerned, again, town council made it very clear that they really like a, you know, fewer people responding to them than than more people.
It'd be in the same way that the select board sends the rest of the warrant, you know, to for review. And so when we receive citizen petitions that's certified and we can send it because it's going to be discussed on town meeting floor at that point. And so we should know, you know, everyone should be aware of any comments council has made on it, just like.
Is that isn't that already, I mean, isn't that already policy? Have you done we sent the warrant to town council generally of or review prior to?
The warrant's always sent.
Yeah, so 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 we're overdoing that.
Yeah.
So and we we when we do include the the, I think, we do include the citizen petition. We don't.
I mean, the wording, we don't include, I'm assuming you're talking about the actual signatures or?
No.
Oh, but the wording is a word.
Yeah, the word wording of the.
Because that's what.
Council in the past has never commented on it because the citizen petition is signed and it has to remain exactly as it was signed, so the citizens would need to amend it on the floor.
Right.
And I think I think the the idea of council reviewing it for potential amendments to make it legal is taking a citizen voice and a citizen desire to have something discussed at town meeting and giving it a legal, like basically, we want town council to look at the warrant ahead of time so that the town meeting doesn't express an opinion and then it get hung up on a legal technicality. We want town meeting's voice to be carried out legally. And so I think the idea behind including this one, the warrant, and having council speak to it is to give the citizens a voice in no different way that we have have our warrant articles reviewed by council, right?
But that should be through the select board, not 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 telling people that they can kind of.
So just that they're curious, and what would happen when you have the 18 citizen petitions that were quite lengthy? I mean, that doesn't fall within the normal purview of town council and you'd be paying $210 an hour for that.
Yeah, I mean, we I can never we can't predict how many citizen petitions we're going to receive or not receive.
I bet we're gonna have 40 of them.
But I'm, well, then I think we should come up with either a policy of they and me I don't think necessarily today, but because, you know, we've been going for two hours here we're we're ways off to figure out this policy for next town meeting. But I do think we should have something, you know, consistent where and I I personally think that council should be able to review citizen petitions to help democracy work in the same way that select board more harmful to get.
Can I make a suggestion that we ask council what is usually typically done in other towns, just to see?
That's a good that's a good thing.
And it is my understanding, and council can speak to this, but it's my understanding that some towns are more willing to help petitioners and some towns kind of say, you guys, if if we want to put on the warrant, we'll put on the warrant. And if a citizen petition happens, it's up to them to do it. And so it's my understanding we have some choice as to how we want to interact with citizen petitions.
And I understand the reason for this recommendation. I mean, it's frustrating to the to the moderator to have a petition that may not be perfected to the degree that, you know, that it's actually, you know, usable.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I heard it's the last special meeting and he, you know, I mean, now, we do have the obviously, there's always the ability to invent things on the floor. And sometimes, you know, people try to craft something and and they don't really get to where they want to go. So we're we but it but yeah, it's a fine line between, you know, assisting people and then, you know, getting involved in the process of the citizen petition where you don't want to, you know, you don't want to have your fingerprints on that because it's really up to citizens to.
And the idea, my idea is to have a smooth town meeting that expresses the will of the people and is legal, you know, and and that that and trying to capture that without overburdening the lawyers or anything like that.
And 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 just the last issue of this, because I don't want I would just want to move on, but but I I do want to speak to it because I don't want to gloss it over. This idea of electronic voting theoretically, I I think that's great. It's my understanding so it's my understanding that at one point, these voting systems were, I don't know what, released or given out or something like that. I don't know what, leased or given out or something like that. But it's not that case anymore. Somebody would have to do some research to find out exactly what the tax, what the cost would be to the taxpayer. That's my concern. And now, I mean, now that we have internet and cell, I don't know. You I don't know even how it works on on what on what kind of system it works on. But it would be the first thing would be to find out how much it's going to actually get cost.
Yeah, and I think.
I'll reach out to Sheffield because we have it in Sheffield.
Okay. And yes, it's my understanding. Do you know if Sheffield leases the equipment?
I'm not positive. I know they had gotten it free to try for the first time, and then they had to pay for it after. I I want to say that Jill told me they bought it. I will confirm.
Yeah, I do think it's worth looking into. And if we did want to do it at next year's town meeting, would that come up in this budget season?
If you wanted to do it, then maybe I'll tell.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do. You have to have money for.
Okay, so.
Well, you know, you'd have so you.
You'd have to have it in the budget right now to pay for.
Right, so it's probably too late, really, unless they're willing to offer it for free this year. But I it is something I would look into because, like you said, there is some financial cost behind leasing the equipment, but one of the things that people have talked about at our select board meetings and at town meetings lately is the amount of time that they take. And so electronic voting may just help speed up the meeting, and that's something that people value too. And it and it may and also give some confidence in the results of the voting. Not that I've heard anyone doubt any result of our votes at town meeting, because they're usually careful about counting, but it may speed up the meeting. The only other thing speaking of budget is that was mentioned in this letter that I want to just touch on today is people bringing mics to speakers and like my father mentioned, we had a Hello volunteer at this meeting to do it and did a good job. I didn't know if we want to continue to rely on volunteers or if it would make sense to put money in the budget to pay people to do it. Because the problem, the problem with having someone volunteer is then they're out moving a mic around and they can't participate. I mean, they can participate in town meeting, but, you know, if people want to be present at the town meeting, maybe we get someone who's not a voter to allow town meeting people to focus on town meeting and not run mics.
Just a thought. It it I mean, it's definitely an idea. Obviously, you know, I I hate to sound like the 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 budget came over here, but you know, obviously, we like to, you know, make sure that we don't overspend on on things. But however, however, I can understand it. Have you spoken to Hill? Did he did you ask if he if he felt that he could that he felt that he could participate?
No, I haven't. And I believe Hill did speak at town meeting. So I'm not saying that he can't speak, but I do think to some degree it would be nice to have that. And if we could have someone volunteer regularly, that would be one thing. I just think the consistency and the security that we know someone's going to be there to do it would be helpful, especially to people who can't walk up to the mic. Right, you know, they don't have to wonder, hey, is there going to be someone to bring the mic to me today?
Right. Okay, well, we can. I would certainly look for 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 volunteers. I there I think there's a number of people who are not voters that actually want to be at town meeting, and maybe that's maybe that's the maybe ask people to. Anyway, yeah. I mean, I think I think, listen, we're look again, so our meetings in the pavilion have really only been that way since COVID. So it's it's been a little bit a little bit different when it was in the firehouse. And I'm assuming at some point we're gonna we're gonna be able to get back inside again. But but no, let's 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 try to make the meetings more efficient. I I agree with you. So anyway, and by the way, just for full disclosure, I did reach out to I didn't respond to this email to to Mark Maycock saying that I would be more than happy to have a discussion with him. He wanted to have just a discussion. So that's that's that. But good suggestions.
Okay, well, and for full disclosure, I ran into him and talked with him.
Really?
Yeah.
In the kitchen, okay. There's literally a kitchen table issue. Yes, but let's go. Let's pull this close. That's good. So okay, great. So the last one is John Silbert, ten nineteen email to the board. So John asked the board to or suggested that posting its meetings prior to September twenty second would allow for more open and transparent government. And I was thinking about open and transparency openness and transparency on the select board. And also I saw in Kathy Trion's letter, she said, I I mean, I don't know how many people are watching the YouTube links after not, but Kathy Trion said, kudos for creating YouTube channel. Your Zoom meetings and YouTube channel provide the ability as a citizen to participate and stay informed of town business rather than remain in the dark or rely on secondhand information and rumor. And I was also thinking about initials on the agenda because they came up. And I was thinking, in order to promote openness and transparency of the select board, I would motion to post our meetings back to June second and include initials of the person who put the item on the agenda on all of our agendas going forward, because those are two motions. So I will agree to put the initials. And and by the way, I I I thank you for reconsidering that because I think it's important, people know, put these things on the agenda. As far as like going back, again, I I don't support that. Hey, Julio. But can I read this full email that that Mr. Silver wrote?
Yeah.
Because.
Of course.
I think it I think I think I think it's interesting because it it writes, it says, Dear Select Board, if the board does not support posting on YouTube its meetings prior to nine twenty two, it does not support open and transparent government. I ask the board to make a motion to post all meetings, and I hope the two members on the board will vote to approve. Then the next sentence is, in the meantime, you have no authority to post any finance committee meetings on the channel. Remove them until the finance committee has voted otherwise. So 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 sincerely, John, sign, Jonathan Silbert, Finance Committee, Monterey. So unless I'm reading reading this incorrectly, the first sentence says, we must have open and transparent government. I want you to post all meetings on YouTube. And then the other one is, but I don't want any of my meetings posted on YouTube, and I want you to remove them. It's in the same it's in the same email. So, yeah, I I think so. I think the well, I can't can't really, I can't do a proper analysis to this. The, you know, one thing that 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 I think that you bring up, yeah, this the idea is either we all do it or we don't, or we or we all don't do it. This consistency or argument, which I think is a valid argument. So here we have an email that says, you guys do it all, you know, on YouTube, but don't put me on there. And I don't think that's I don't think that's reasonable or fair. If we're all gonna be on YouTube, then we'll all be on YouTube. Only some of us. So that I I think that's my problem with it. And I I I you know, and and, you know, I I could understand that that it's it's, you know, must be. I have not yet watched. I'm sorry, I watch one YouTube thing of our meetings. And I'm sure it's gonna it's gonna will be interesting as as time goes on. But if the finance committee doesn't post on YouTube, then why then why should we and vice versa?
Well, I think his point is that we are not the finance committee, and the finance committee decide needs to decide what videos they're posting of their own. On YouTube, based on this letter, I would assume that he will support the finance committee posting all meetings. They just haven't brought that topic up for discussion. But I think we as a select board need to focus on what we're doing with our YouTube videos. And like I said, I didn't know if people were getting much out of it, but after reading Kathy Trion's letter, you know, it made me, I mean, I thought it was good policy, which is why I supported it for months. But to hear that people are benefiting from it makes me think that we should post back to June when we made the initial policy to post on the website. And and I hope the finance committee will go to post their meetings to YouTube, because I think it's really good and transparent. But they need to make that decision for themselves. We can't.
So so let me let me let me let me let me think on this, if that's okay. I do also want to review the YouTube's policy. And I am curious. When is the finance committee meeting?
Monday.
What?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Is this on the agenda? No.
It is not.
No.
It is not.
So I'm curious as to I I certainly, one thing that we 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 kind of change my thinking is if other of other boards if other boards start to practice what they what they preach. So it's a so I will look to the finance committee to see what the finance committee does about this, but again, I I this email is I don't know. It's interesting. So I will think. So what I would what I could do is I would like to separate your motion to two motions. I I would, if you if you make a motion to put the to put the initials back on, I would certainly I would certainly second that. And I would ask for your a little latitude over here to let me think about these other. Let me think about the other video. I have to go yes or no. I just let me.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Yeah. Motion for select board policy to be including the initials of the select board member who has added an agenda item after the agenda item to clarify who added the agenda.
I second that motion. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, and prior to us, prior to me making a motion to adjourn, unless you have oh, that room, unless it does the public have anything else to any questions or comments?
I do have one piece of business. I was asked to announce that Monterey Likes the Holidays ceremony is this Saturday, seven PM at the library. It's an event sponsored by the Cultural Council and the community center. And.
Competing with Rockefeller Center, huh? The tree lighting ceremony.
We've got everything they got. We've got a skating rink. We've got a tree. We have everything that they. We don't have catering, but that, you know, but we maybe next year we'll have catering. That's terrific. Well, I'd like to before I make a motion to alert, I'd like to wish you a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving, Justin. Thank you for your service. And the best to your family and to Melissa and her family and to Julio and his family and everybody out there in TV land. I am thankful I'm thankful for Monterey. That's what I'm thankful for. Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
See ya.